From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
The board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Still here.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, November 16th, 2:00 PM, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll first hear from County Council Margot Raison for a report taken on action in closed session.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. This morning in closed session, you met on items number 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, and 39. There is no reportable action.
Thank you. We'll begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a C-A or C above the items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. The C-A represents the consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors, while the C represents the consent agenda for the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the public wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed-session item. At this time, I'll read the consent agenda item numbers for the Board of Supervisors agenda. That is, item 5 on page 2, items 6 through 12 on page 3, 13 through 15, as well as 18 through 20 on page 4, 21 through 26 on page 5, items 30, or excuse me, 27, 32, and 33 on page 6, items 35 through 41 on page 7, and lastly, item 42 on page 8. And I would also like to note that item 4 has been pulled off consent by the Planning Department and will be heard in listed numerical order. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak regarding the consent agenda? Would any members of the board like an item removed for discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda adjourned as the Kern County Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District.
Second.
Thank you.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, we're now sitting as the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and will consider the consent agenda which includes item C1. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak regarding the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District agenda? Seeing none, would any members like an item removed for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda adjourned as Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and reconvene as the Kern County Board of Supervisors. Please cash your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. We have reconvened as the Kern County Board of Supervisors and will now consider item number 2, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask questions for clarification, make referrals to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making the presentation. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll now consider item number 3, board member announcements or reports. Is there anything from the board? Okay. Next up is item number 4, under Planning and Natural Resources Department, and that is a request for determination of public convenience by ARCO AMPM by RSJ Enterprise for the issuance of an off-sale beer and wine package store type 20 license in a C2 PD district located at 7435 Callaway Drive in Bakersfield. For that, I will call on Planning Director Laurel Oviat.
Good afternoon, thank you, members of the board. I'm here today with Craig Murphy, my Assistant Director. As you note, this matter is an alcohol and beverage license for beer and wine for the AMPM Convenience Store gas station, which was approved by your board on October 9th, 2018. As you recall, this project was appealed to your board, and the original site consisted of the AMPM, two fast-food restaurants, a drive-through car wash, and a 5,000-square-foot retail building. However, subsequent to the approval of the project layout, the applicant did remove the retail building and replaced it with a drainage sump. A copy of the final site layout is attached to the Sedentum staff report. At this time, the site has been graded. Required roadway improvements are currently being constructed, and building permits for this AMPM gas station are currently in for review. As you know, that particular project is not before your board today. What is before your board is a determination of public convenience, which is required by the, or which is offered by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. We have provided you with an addendum with two letters of opposition and a request for continuance from the Norris School District, who would like to have more conversation with staff about this project. I would note, however, that the way that the statute is written, your board only has 90 days. Today is the 90th day for your comments to be taken into consideration by ABC. You are certainly free to continue this matter, however, whatever recommendation you make will not be considered by ABC and does not have to be considered by ABC. Therefore, staff is recommending that you take public testimony today. We have done an evaluation on the site. We do believe that a beer and wine license is appropriate for this particular AMPM Convenience Store. The issues and mitigations that have been placed on this shopping center through extensive, extensive public comments was placed by your board on it in 2018. We'd also note that everyone who commented or participated in the hearing in 2018 did receive a notice, and to date, we only have these two letters in the record. At this time, we are, we have a slightly revised recommendation. Our recommendation is to adopt resolution and recommended findings approving the liquor license as requested, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Oviat. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter? Please come down to the podium.
Good afternoon, this is Johnny Ochoa. I submitted a letter with, I don't know if you guys received it. I have a copy here, I can give it to you.
I have it right here.
You do? Okay. So, I guess I have a lot of concerns regarding this liquor license. First of all, it's gonna be like in front of my house, it's with all the childrens. I kinda did a summary, so I'm just gonna go ahead and go over the summary. So, to me, it's just less than 600 feet from the site. The way this map, what is it, map 20 is presented, it has like a .5-mile buffer, which doesn't really show where the Norris School District is. As you can see on the map, that's less than 600 feet to me, you know? And anyway, to me, like you guys should take that into consideration along with bringing more traffic, and that's what, what that's gonna cause is like, to me, it's a health and safety hazard to the kids, because you're gonna have a gas station where you're gonna have people coming and buying liquor from this gas station. So, you're gonna increase the traffic. That's one of the concerns. You have children crossing the street, which is gonna make the street more busier than what it normally is. So, again, to me, there's other concerns. You can read it on the letter, but I just wanted to point that out, that to me, the way it was presented is not clearly defined, you know? If, you know, it's up to you guys to make the determination, like I said on my letter, and I yet have to seek legal counsel on this matter, but I just wanna present it, just in, if, just in case if in the future something happens, it's on the record that I presented my recommendations to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this?
My name is Cy Silver, C-Y-S-I-L-V-E-R. I'm the superintendent of the Norris School District. I first want to say thank you to all of you for your service you guys provide. I know these are difficult times, and I appreciate what you guys do and the service you provide our community. I also thank you for the opportunity to address you today in regards to the determination of public convenience for the ARCO AMPM on the northwest corner of Snow Road and Callaway Drive. This development is within the Norris School District boundaries and is directly across the intersection diagonally from Norris Middle School, which is on the southeast corner of Snow Road and Callaway Drive. Back on September 11th, 2018, your board heard an appeal from our previous superintendent and a number of community members concerned about a zoning change and location of this development. Former Supervisor Gleason provided direction to staff for a number of improvements to the development, including signage and aesthetics to provide a better fit for the neighborhood, which we appreciate greatly. However, it still allowed for the development to proceed. From the district perspective, our initial and current concern is that the AMPM ARCO would be built only 425 feet from the Norris Middle School campus, and referenced, we referenced the California Business Code 23798B, which allows the Department for Alcohol Beverage Control to refuse the issuance of retail licenses for premises located within 600 feet of schools. For the well-being of our students, we still believe that a business that sells alcohol and tobacco products should not be located in such close proximity to a school site. Our request today is to have the opportunity to address the board regarding our continued concerns with the location of this project, request the possible postponement of the, of the approval by the Board of Supervisors, to have the opportunity to meet with the applicant's county staff and/or our area supervisor to discuss the topic and express our concerns, and request the board not approve or recommend the issuance of the liquor license for this location based on the proximity to Norris Middle School for the well-being of our students. I thank you for the time and appreciate any response that you can provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members, other members of the public that would like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for comments, and since this is in District 1, I'll, I'll start. I just wanted to say that I understand and I appreciate some of these concerns, but I've also seen, you know, around Bakersfield, including around Rose Del Highway where there's, you know, this is not, it's not an unusual thing for a gas station to be so close to a school, even, even if that gas station is selling beer or wine or that type of thing. I feel like it's pretty common, and as growth continues to move out toward the northwest, there, there isn't a lot of options for residents out there as far as purchasing fuel. I think the closest gas stations would be on Olive Drive and Callaway and probably the gas station on Seventh Standard. This project again was approved in 2018, is that correct? So, you know, this has been a long time going in, in the development stage, and now that they've broken ground on it and it's being constructed, I feel like to come back in at the 11th hour and as a supervisor and tell these people what they can or can't do with this project that they've already, you know, put, put a lot of time and effort and financial resources into as part of, you know, working with the county and going through that process and making the changes that were requested, wouldn't, wouldn't be the correct thing for me to do as a supervisor. So, I definitely appreciate the concerns, but those are just my thoughts on the project and... and I'll open it up to any of my other colleagues that have any thoughts or comments to share. Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and motion on staff's recommendation.
Second.
Oh, Director Oviat?
I apologize, members of the board. If I could just address Mr. Ochoa's comments, he has placed into the record a number of comments about studies done in Spain and other places about the impacts of gas stations. All of you, your board members have at one time or another been on the San Joaquin Air District Board, and you are well aware that the vapor recovery systems and other sorts of regulation in California on gas stations and the emissions and the other possible chemicals are not at all what is in the record that he has provided to you, and I wanted to make sure that that was on the record for your, before you take action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, we have a motion and a second, and so I would ask that we go ahead and cast our
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. We will now consider item number 16 under the County Administrative Office, and that is a proposed resolution authorizing application to the Governor's Office of Emergency Services for Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities Grant in the amount of $39,500,000 and a Letter of Support to Build Wells, Pumps, and Project Components for the Willow Springs Water Bank and the Rosenmond area. And for that, I will turn over to our CAO, Mr. Ryan Alsop.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Mr. Christensen from the CAO's office will handle this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is an item that, a request that your board consider a resolution authorizing the CAO to prepare an application to the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, or CAL OES, for a Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities Grant, or BRIC, B-R-I-C is the acronym, for $39.5 million. If the application is approved, the funds would be earmarked specifically for well improvements and pump improvements at Willow Springs Water Bank. Willow Springs Water Bank can't apply for the grant because it is not a qualified public agency with a, an approved hazard mitigation plan. However, Kern County does have one of those and can apply with Willow Springs, well, we would serve as the grantee, and Willow Springs would be the sub-recipient. In return, Willow Springs would provide Kern County with 30,000 acre feet of storage in their water bank. A formal agreement between Willow Springs and the county is anticipated in the future if the grant is funded. There's a 25% match required for the grant that will be provided through an existing Proposition 1 grant that was already obtained and allocated to Willow Springs Water Bank. The groundwater banking improvements project funded by the BRIC grant would benefit both Kern County and Willow Springs. Willow Springs would have funds to construct the needed water bank improvements. Kern County would have, obtain access to the water bank and have the ability to store water obtained during wet years, thus keeping more water in Kern County. Staff recommends that your board adopt the resolution, authorize the county administrative offices to submit the required grant application, and authorize the chairman to sign a letter of support. Mark Bueller from Willow Springs had planned to speak to the board this afternoon, however, he's unable to be in attendance. He sends his regrets. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is obviously in District Two, and so I'll go ahead and start it off. Not a whole lot to comment on this time around. This is the second time, obviously, that we've considered this. How many years ago was that, that we, that we approved this similar action, and I believe the grant wasn't funded at that time?
It was 2018, late, late December, I think, yeah.
Well, no circumstances have changed to make this any less of a prudent move for us. If anything, probably the drought conditions are more acute and it's even more necessary. And so thank you, Mr. Christensen, for your work on this, and for the CAO's office for your support, and I would make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, our next item is number 17 under County Administrative Office, and that is a proposed resolution authorizing issuance of 2021 private placement loan for psychiatric health facility construction in a principal amount not to exceed $30 million. And for that, I will call back on our CAO, Ryan Alsop.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Curry from the Chief Administrative Office will handle this item for us today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The item before you is the proposed financing for the construction of two psychiatric health facilities on county-owned property in the greater Bakersfield area. Back in April, your board approved a request from the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Department for the construction of these facilities to improve the overall system of care. Since April, the County Administrative Office and our outside finance partners have been putting together a financing proposal, the one before you today. Part of that work included evaluating a public bond issuance versus a private loan, private placement loan. We determined the flexibility and rates offered with the private placement loan made it a better choice for this project. Ultimately, an RFP was conducted, and the response from Capital One Public Financing was selected. This proposal is a private placement loan, as I mentioned, with a 20-year term and a fixed interest rate of 2.38%. The proposal, the principal amount is $27,611,722, with estimated annual debt service payments of $1,735,071, and total cost of issuance not to exceed $200,000. The building and operation of the psychiatric health facilities will not impact the general fund, as depreciation and interest will be charged to the department through the countywide cost allocation plan, and ultimately to the appropriate state and federal funding sources. The recommendation today is for your board to approve and adopt the resolution, approving documents necessary for the issuance of the 2021 lease revenue private placement loan for the construction of the two psychiatric health facilities. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Are there any questions from Mr. Curry at this time?
I have a question.
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you for your diligence in this matter. It sounds like we got a good deal. The interest rate sounds good. What is the process of determining who gets to construct the building?
The General Services Department conducted an RFP as part of the design-build process to select a qualified entity.
Who was that? Do you know?
The entity that's been selected? I'm not su, have they made that selection?
Where?
They've made that selection. The, the entity is querying construction.
Okay.
And that, that contract will come back before your board in early December.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Any other questions? Okay, I don't think so. Appreciate it. Okay, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, any other comments or questions from the board? And Madam Court, did we need a vote on that one? Okay. So we'll look for a motion on staff's recommendation.
Motion to approve and adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second it. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. We'll now consider item number 28 under the Human Resources Division, proposed resolution changing the terms and conditions of employment for unrepresented employees in bargaining units M, D, and X to provide changes to wages, hours, terms, and conditions of employment. And for that, I will turn it over to our Head of Human Resources, Devin Brown.
Good afternoon, Chairman Peters, members of the board. The item before you is a proposed resolution for unrepresented bargaining units, which are bargaining units M, D, and X that represents our management, mid-management, and confidential employees. As you know, we've been steadily bringing new contracts to your board, almost every meeting with our represented bargaining units, and in each and every one of those, we've included items for wage increases. We're here before you today to ask for your adoption of this resolution for our unrepresented employees, which would impose or implement similar terms on those employees and those respective bargaining units. So far, we've brought five MOUs to your board, and you've adopted those. We have three more following this item that we'll be asking your board to approve, and we have two that we're outstanding negotiating with at this current time. And even those two outstanding bargaining units, we are proposing similar terms to the items before you with our unrepresented group. So I'll walk through those terms just for clarity. The, the major item is a transition from our five-step merit-based increment system to a 10-step-based cost-of-living adjustment salary schedule with 2% increases in between each step. We are proposing that this would take effect January 1st of this coming year, 2022, and would, would represent the new salary schedule for our management, mid-management, and confidential employees. At the turn of the fiscal year, everybody that's, hasn't reached the top step moves up to that new next step, causing a 2% increase in their base salary. In addition, there's an item included in this resolution for a 2.5% additional COLA come July of 2022. Again, that's similar to what we've agreed to with all of our represented bargaining units and have proposed to those that haven't reached agreement as well. And that would take effect July 2nd of 2022, the pay period starting that day. The third item in this resolution is what we've come to know as winter recess, which is our three days, weekdays in between the New Year's, or Christmas and the New Year's holidays. For the last four years, we've had those, actually, three years, we've had those off as part of an extended benefit to allow our employees during low-traffic days the flexibility to take that extra time off with their family and friends and allow for limited closure of our county facilities during that time period. We're proposing to include that for our unrepresented employees for the next three years. That would include this year, 2021, 2022, and then 2023. And again, that's similar to our proposal items with our represented bargaining units that we've reached agreement with and that we're continuing to negotiate with. And the final item is an increase in our life insurance. We have an employee, employer-provided life insurance for all of our employees in these bargaining groups. The increase proposed would be moving our confidential employees from a $50,000 life insurance to $100,000 life insurance, and our management from $100,000 to $400,000. Again, that's, that's very similar terms that have been adopted for our employee-represented groups, and so we're asking for the same to be adopted here in this resolution. So this resolution, again, applies to our unrepresented bargaining units M, D, and X, and we're asking that your board and recommending that your board adopt the proposed resolution changing the terms and conditions of employment and referring it to our Human Resources Division to implement those changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask, are there any, anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any further questions, comments, or a motion on staff's recommendation? Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. So is our next items, they're all relating to labor union agreements, items 29 through 31 under the Human Resources Division. So those will be heard concurrently and then voted on separately. And these items are proposed memorandum of understanding with Kern County Sheriff's Command Association, 1 through 3, respectively, for changes of hours, wages, terms, and conditions of employment effective November 16th, 2021, through June 30th, 2024. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Brown.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I mentioned in my earlier comments, we did reach agreement with three other bargaining units. All three are representative of our command staff, employees in our Kern County Sheriff's Office and our Kern County District Attorney's Office. They represent three different separate bargaining groups, Kern County Sheriff's Command Association, 1, 2, and 3, and they represent particular positions within each of those, respectively. We're bringing forward three MOUs to you today for consideration. They all have the, the same terms adopted within each of them, and so I'll run through those quickly. But I do want to take a moment to say, this is kind of a companion item of two of the MOUs you approved last Tuesday for our Kern Law Enforcement Association employees and our Kern County Detention Officers Association employees. And so this will help address and continue to make sure that there's no compaction between our management ranks in the sheriff's office and the line staff ranks that were approved last week. So the, the terms of the contracts run through June 30th of 2024, and included, within these agreements are an increase in salary effective November 20th of this year of 5% across the board for all of the employees in each of these MOUs. Again, that's the same item that was adopted for our detention officers and deputy sheriffs last Tuesday. Again, that we're proposing within this MOU and these MOUs, 10-base COLA step salary schedule, again, with 2% incremental growth in between each COLA step to become effective January 1st of 2022. A 2.5% additional COLA, January, or July 2nd of 2022. Within each of these, the employees will have the option to cash out up to 40 hours of their vacation balances during the term of the MOU, each, each year of, of the MOU. So that's three opportunities. And within each of these agreements are the addition of winter recess, which, again, is the three paid holidays, days off in between the Christmas and New Year's holidays, and that would be for 2021, 2022, and 2023. The last item that's included that I'll mention is the changes to our retiree health premium supplement program, limiting it to existing employees and allowing our current staff to opt out if they so choose of the program. The proposed MOUs, again, continue our efforts to restructure our compensation to allow for more regular wage growth throughout the tenure of our employees' time with the county. The restructured salary schedule increases the entry-level salary for all represented positions and will help us recruit and retain individuals within those classifications represented by these MOUs. It also will provide regular and sustainable base wage growth of 2% each year for a total of nine years. The structure affords the county the ability, as identified in this particular MOU, to offer an additional COLA at a more regular interval, and here in this contract, we're proposing that 2.5% COLA in July of 2022. Again, this continues your board's approach to limiting future liabilities through the elimination of our retirement health premium supplement program for new employees, adds winter recess, as I mentioned, and we are recommending that your board approve all three of these MOUs and refer them back to the Human Resources Division to implement the changes. Be happy to answer any more questions, but we look forward to moving forward with these three agreements and having some time off in the, in the holidays.
Well, thank you and, and all of your team for all your work on that. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion on item 29.
Move approval?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
I'm sorry. Can we start over?
Sure. Let's try that one more time.
We'll try that one more time. I need Chairman Peters to... I need Chairman Peters to vote.
Okay.
Now, thank you.
Perfect.
Motion is approved. All ayes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on item 30?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Sorry, second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved. All ayes.
Okay, and lastly, is there a motion on item 31?
So moved.
Second.
And the motion is approved. All ayes.
Great, thank you. So the last item to be heard today deals with the redistricting process and has been noticed to be, to the public to be heard at 3:00 p.m. Therefore, the board will take a short recess and reconvene to consider item number 34 under county council. And so with that, we are recessed until 3:00 p.m.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you let the record reflect that the Board has reconvened with all members present?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Before we begin and consider item number 34, I would like to introduce our interpreter, Mr. Fernando Lopez, who is available for anyone in the audience requiring translation of the proceedings from English to Spanish, or a translator to address the Board. Mr. Lopez, would you please share this information?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We will now consider item number 34 under County Council. It has a presentation of draft alternative supervisory district maps in public hearing of the 2021 supervisory redistricting process, as well as direction to staff and consultants regarding further modification of maps, or to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2.06 Title II of the Kern County Ordinance Code to adjust the boundaries of supervisory districts 1 through 5 to meet federal and state law following the 2020 federal census. And to begin that presentation, I'll call on our County Council, Margarita Rizal.
Good afternoon. Today is another scheduled public hearing regarding redistricting. In addition to today's hearing, your Board held public hearings on September 7th, September 28th, October 26th, and November 8th. The hearing on November 8th was an evening hearing. Additionally, numerous public workshops and meetings occurred throughout the late spring and summer. The county's redistricting website has been up for months, and we've posted all comments that have been received. We've also posted on the website the various draft maps submitted for your Board's consideration. And as you know, the county has engaged in civic outreach and public engagement for many months. During your last public hearing on November 8th, your Board again considered public comment and considered various maps. At that meeting, you directed Paul Mitchell, our demographic expert, to make some changes to draft map A2 to unite various census-designated places. That new draft map was then referenced as A3. At the conclusion of the November 8th hearing, you directed publication of draft map A3 and the map previously submitted by the Equity Maps Coalition for seven days in advance of today's hearing. That publication occurred. Today's meeting is another opportunity to receive public comment, and if you desire, make modifications to the various maps. However, the Board is also able to adopt any of the maps that have been published for the required seven days under Election Code Section 21508 Subsection D Subsection 1. Should you choose that route today, we have prepared an ordinance that repeals the existing supervisory lines and replaces the lines with those of the map you adopt. You can vote to adopt a particular map and enact the ordinance. Alternatively, you can request additional modifications to the proposed maps, create a new map, and/or set an additional public hearing. It's worth noting that if the Board has not adopted a new map by December 15th, the Court will take over the process. We expect the arrival of our demographer, Paul Mitchell, today, and also Marguerite Leoni, one of our outside attorneys, is present today. And as throughout this process, I'm accompanied by Deputy County Counsel Stephanie Bowie, and Jason Weeby and Amanda Reese, both from the CIO's office. As your Board directed publication of the maps, we do not have a PowerPoint presentation explaining those various draft maps today. We do, however, have the maps that were published and can put those on the screen. Of course, we are happy to answer any questions you may have. First, however, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing and receive public comment.
Thank you. We'll do that at this time. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter? If you could please make your way to the podium at this time.
Plain, M-C-L-E-A-N. Thank you for letting me express my opinions. After last week's redistricting meeting, it is apparent one group has substantial financial support behind their platform. I see that effort not in Kern County's best interest. This isolated county of Kern should remain conservative and oppose those who promote fear, power, and control. We all know the current state administration is funded by big business, tech companies, labor unions, healthcare giants, and billionaires. We do not want to be represented by these groups. Let us keep this county in control and fight for our constitutional freedom. I feel District Plan A3 will serve this purpose in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair, Supervisors. My name is Troy Hightower. I'm a local consultant here in town, and I'd like to comment on the amount of time that the public has had to review this information. The staff report for today mentioned Exhibits 1, the public comments that were made, 2, the one alternative, and 3 was the other alternative. However, those maps and that information was not attached to the staff report. I've got it on the website and couldn't find it. We went on the website and were able to find it under the redistricting website, but the agenda item listed Exhibits, but it wasn't in the staff report. The reason I bring that up is this is a very serious matter, and I think we need more time for the public to review the alternatives that are presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hello, my name is Barbara Fellows, and I'm here to support Map, I'm sorry, A3, and I'm totally opposed to Map D. And I want to thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please? My name is Lori Pesante.
Y trabajo por la Fundación Dolores Huerta.
And I work for the Dolores Huerta Foundation.
Y aunque el español no es mi primer idioma.
Even though Spanish is not my first language.
Estoy aquí a hablar por los que no pueden hablar hoy.
Today I'm here to speak for those who cannot speak.
Porque sabemos que en un martes a las 3 de la tarde.
Because, as we know, on a Tuesday at 3:00 PM.
Edificio para los que están trabajando en el campo.
It is very difficult for people who are working in the fields.
Y están recogiendo niños a la escuela.
And picking up their children from school.
Participar en un proceso tan importante como esto.
To be able to participate in an event such as important as this one is.
Y debemos saber que la mayoría del condado ya son latinos.
We should know, be aware that the majority of the county is Latino.
Y que tenemos no solamente los latinos que hablan español, pero también otras personas que hablan otros idiomas.
And we not only have the Spanish speaking Latino, but we also have people that speak other languages.
Y es evidencia del proceso que ha hecho el condado, que solamente estamos escuchando el español, porque la fundación y otras personas en la comunidad han trabajado muchísimo para que vengan los demás de esta comunidad.
It's evidenced by this process that the county has undertaken...
Lo siento, no se preocupen. Que no hemos escuchado de otras personas que están hablando idiomas aparte del español.
We have not heard from other people to speak languages aside from Spanish.
Y en mi opinión es porque la fundación y muchas organizaciones en el condado.
It's my opinion because this foundation and other organizations in the county.
Han trabajado muchísimo para que tengan oportunidad a otras personas participar en este proceso.
Have worked very hard so people could have the opportunities to take part in this process.
Y ustedes han escuchado muchísimo comentario.
You've heard of a lot of commentary, comments.
De muchas personas en el condado.
From many people throughout the county.
Y aunque están escuchando ahorita opiniones al contrario del mapa de equidad.
And right now you're hearing comments against Equity Map.
Pero tienen que saber que la comunidad sí sabe quién ha estado aquí a apoyar este mapa.
But you must know that the community is aware of who has been here supporting this map.
Y depende de cómo ustedes van a votar.
And depending on how you vote.
La comunidad sí también va a saber quién está apoyando la comunidad y quién no está apoyándola.
The community will know who supports the community and who does not support the community.
La mayoría del condado son latinos y por eso tienen la protección de la ley.
The majority of the residents of this county are Latinos, and they have the protection of the law.
Y aunque puede ser que van a escoger un mapa que tiene datos que posiblemente sí cumple con la ley.
And although you might choose or select a map that does conform within the law.
Vamos a saber, rapidísimo vamos a ver que los datos no van a cumplir con la ley, porque están creciendo muchísimo la población.
We will find out very quickly that those maps, those data does not comply with the law, because the population is growing very quickly.
El único mapa que sí cumple con la ley ahora, hoy día, y también por los próximos diez años, es el mapa de equidad.
The only map that complies with the law today, right now, and within the next 10 years, is the Equity Map.
Gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hi, Russell Johnson, on behalf of the Associated Builders and Contractors. Just wanted to thank your Board for the open and public process you've had in reviewing the maps. Redistricting is a very important part of the democratic process. Also, based on the comments we stated at the last meeting, I think before you today, you have a few maps to look at. I think one of our concerns was that you have to meet all the tests you are required to meet by law, but also maintaining consistency for the constituents and for the voters in Kern County is important. And you've got the ability to do that with one of the maps, where you can maintain a consistent boundary line, especially since these districts were just redrawn just a couple of years ago. And in keeping with my last comments, you know, the voters are just getting a chance to know you. You're just getting a chance to know them in your new districts, and it's an important part to try to ensure that they can maintain those relationships with their elected officials. So thank you for your time, and thank you for setting aside a lot of time for this process. Thanks.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the Board. My name is Kalen Delion Peterson, and I'm the Executive Vice President representing the Greater Bakersfield Chamber. We're the largest and broadest business organization in Kern County. I wanted to express our support for County Draft Map A3. This map currently represents the closest representation to the lines that are currently drawn, lines that were just done a few years ago through the county's comprehensive and thorough redistricting process that has already been adjudicated and signed into law by a federal judge. We believe and advocate for fair and equal representation, and feel that maintaining the boundaries that were most recently set is the best option, not only for those who recently received a new representative, but also for the rest of Kern County. I thank you for this process, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, Leilani Tedeschi. As I commented last week, the data presented by the Equity Coalition Organization for the mapping and the CVAP data, I believe, is based on inaccurate voter roll data. Still have a concern that they're presenting positions that are not accurate, based on the voter rolls being, I guess, dirty, unmanaged, and not updated. As are Hispanic citizens that are working during the day, I'm here to represent Asians, African Americans, Caucasians, and other Hispanics that I've spoken to over the past couple of weeks who adamantly support Plan A3. They're at work right now, and they've asked me to convey their support of Plan A3. They're busy operating their businesses, working for employers, and also providing income for their families. I took a few minutes to glance at the tables that were provided in the handout, and a quick comparison of the two maps. Actually, Plan A provides three districts that have a higher representation of the Hispanic community than does the Equity Coalition map. So I'm curious why they wouldn't support Plan A when three of the five districts have a higher representation there of the Hispanic community. The other two remaining districts, one is The other two remaining districts, one is Letizia Perez's, which the Equity Coalition map has a 5% greater percentage there, and District 3 with just about a 9% difference. With Plan A, the majority of the citizens would continue to have consistency with the district supervisors that have been placed for the last couple of years.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, we're about 20 seconds over.
Oh.
See if you can bring your comments to close, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon. I too have, I turned in a page of signatures, 45 signatures of people I spoke to that aren't able to make it here.
Sir, can I have your name for the record?
Jesse Sanders.
Thank you.
And they all agree that A3 is the best map. So Latinos are not the only ones working. According to her, we have got a higher Latino count here in in the county, but in our last census, citizenship was not able to be required required in the census, so we don't know if they're all citizens. We do have an open border, again. I think we should be assimilating, learning the language, getting in with each other, and I don't think this equity map does that. I think it just segregates further and is a power play for liberal politics. It's it's virtue, it's virtue signaling for more more votes. So I support A3 and I oppose D, the equity ban.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Mark McKenzie. I've lived in Bakersfield for about 20 years. I'm a local businessman, been in the construction industry, and I'm just here to support the map as drawn, A3. As was said earlier, I think it's the closest representation with some well-thought-out adjustments to to what we currently have and which was adjudicated and agreed upon, I think, just around three years ago. And what was said earlier about maintaining the consistency, I think, is important. It just seems ridiculous at this point to make the major changes that are suggested by Plan D. And, you know, I'm a little bit new to this, but I did do my homework in my understanding that this is really all about trying to set these districts equally population, and it's not supposed to be driven by race or politics, but it just seems to me that everything I've heard is is about, these new maps are about race and about politics, and I think that's unfortunate. The other research that I've done, I haven't really seen any any actions, resolutions, behavior of any of the the board that would lead me to believe that that you're biased in in either. I think the board is represented, that they've tried to act on a nonpartisan basis, and that I don't see any decisions that have been made or resolutions that would indicate that any of the board members have any racist tendencies. So with that, I'm in support of A3 and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, board members. Nadine Escalante. I just wanted to make a few comments in response to the individuals who spoke in. As we talk about assimilation, I think the very most important thing we need to remember is the land that we live on is Native American land. I am half Chocton, I'm half Creek. My ancestors were born on this land. I am the eighth generation, my children are the ninth. I've waited a whole year for this county to release my adoption work, paperwork, a whole year. So when we talk about racism still existing in this county, it does. I was born and raised in this county. I was raised, I was born out in Roseman, put into foster care, but I worked for this county because I loved this county. I loved my job at probation for 10 years until I was assaulted and I can't work. That is why I'm here today, is because my children's father is taking over for me on parent duty. I applaud the parent, the people that are here because they have the ability to be here, but I applaud the people that want to be here but they can't because they don't have people to pick up their kids. They're working two jobs, they're at work, there are reasons why. And I want to commend our board for the things that you do in this community, but we want more. We want to expand Kern County. My daughter lives down in LA area, beautiful, no trash, no litter, perfect streets, no holes. This last week I've had the board, I've contacted Supervisor Perez's office to have work on holes in my street. My neighbor who's Hispanic, the majority of my neighborhood is Hispanic. My neighbor spoke to the county employee and they said, "The county's broke, we can't afford to fix potholes." This is what the Hispanic, the brown community is told. And for me being half-black, I'm very saddened because I don't see anybody from our black community. This is why we need the equitable map. We need to represent everybody in this county because we all make this country thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, board. Lydia Chaney, resident of Tehachapi. Today I represent Greater Tehachapi Economic Development Council. I'm the president and on behalf of my board, we all agreed to the adoption of Map A3 and as my personal selection, also A3. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Moreno. And I went around my neighborhood and to see how many people were in support of Map Plan A3, and I collected a small batch and, but even though it's still, I think it's important to note that out of the 16 signatures, there were eight Hispanics that were in, were for Plan A3. And I think it's still important to point out that out of those eight Hispanics, they said that they do not support the Dolores Huerta Foundation, much less their equitable map. And like numerous Hispanics like myself across Kern County, we don't support the rekindling of the segregation. We don't support the disturbing idea that Hispanics should be voting for Hispanics just because they're Hispanics. What I'm hearing is that they won't even vote for blacks. We don't support those who plan to remove people from their positions who have been rightfully elected just because they're white. We support those who genuinely promote fairness and equality to people of every skin color. We support law and order in every issue that affects our communities. And we ask that you do not allow the Dolores Huerta intimidation to make unjust map decisions for you, and here's an example of what I'm talking about. I happened to run across this this letter dated August 23rd from the ACLU Dolores Huerta Foundation, signed by Ms. Pesante, to the board's supervisors, explaining how they should operate or run their, facilitate their redistricting, which is fair. But in the end, this is how they end it. Further, many organizations, including the ACLU, are prioritizing redistricting and, if necessary, redistricting litigation. That's intimidation. We Hispanics are awake and not woke, and we are paying attention. We ask that you do what's fair to our communities by supporting the map that is fair to all of Kern County, and that's Map Plan A3. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please? Any other public speakers?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Vivian Anfoso and I live in Kern County, specifically District 2. I'm here today as a resident of Bakersfield and a member representative for over 6,000 home care workers that choose to live and work here in Kern County. I'm here in support of the Equity Coalition map being proposed. We believe this map will improve the quality of life for all residents of Kern County and create representation that engages all of its communities. The Equity Coalition map is based on 2020 census data and reflects the significant increase in populations of Kern County's communities of color. The Equity Coalition map includes three Latino-majority districts to reflect Kern County's current demographics. Keeping communities of interest whole in the redistricting process is one of several required redistricting criteria in California. Lastly, I support the Equity Coalition map because it's based on equity indicators like pollution burden, COVID impact, and socio-economic factors, and Kern's history of land use and discrimination, as well as it protects our taxpayers' money by being in full and clear compliance with California Fair Maps Act of 2019 and, of course, the Voting Rights Act, which reduces the risk of expensive litigation. Thank you to the County of Kern for hosting this public hearing, and this concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please? Any other public speakers?
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Fallgatter, and I'm supporting the redistricting map A3.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Teresa Macías.
Macías?
Macías.
My name is Teresa Macías.
Y yo estoy aquí.
I am here.
Para cambiar la narrativa.
To change the narrative.
De nosotros, los hispanos, morenos.
Having to do with us brown Hispanics.
Somos una sola raza.
We are one single race.
Y yo apoyo el mapa de la coalición de la igualdad.
I support the coalition map.
Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public speakers?
I'm Roseanne Wattonville. I came the other evening. Do you want me to spell my name? Thank you. I support the Equity Coalition map because I think we need to really look forward and make sure that we serve our underserved community. I'm a retired teacher, I mentioned that last time, and I'm actually from the Rosedale area. I'm not going to mention anything else other than I think the really important thing here is to serve our underserved community and think about that. Which map's going to do the best for that? I've looked at it, I think it's going to be the Equity Coalition map. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please? Any other public speakers?
My name is Mercedes Macías, and I've been sitting here day after day, listening to a bunch of people say really racist remarks and then come and tell you that they're not racist and they don't have a racist bone in their body, and that's just, it's just I think that in 2021, my daughter and my unborn child shouldn't have to look at this board in Kern County and not see more than Letizia Perez. Sorry, Letizia, I'm happy, I'm proud that you're here. I'm happy. But this board is filled with white men, and that is not a reflection of our community. Our community is incredibly diverse. So that's what I have to say, and I hope you make the right choice in choosing a map that was created by the community for the community and not for the interest of keeping people in power who don't deserve to be there anymore.
Excuse me. Next speaker, please. Excuse me, folks, can we please refrain from commenting, this is just public presentation time?
Evening. My name is Javier Soro. It seems that I missed the good parts of this meeting. I came here to speak about the Equity Coalition map, which is based on a 2020 consensus consensus data and reflects the significant increase in populations of Kern County's communities of color. What I understand is, like, how are we going to take a census for 2020 and not follow through with it and, you know, shape our community based on the data that we've been given? It only makes sense to follow these protocols. We listen to the community, yet we're not going through with our promises. It's as simple as that. If, if it's about, you know, maintaining a lower tax or keeping wages higher for certain people, then simply these people are out of touch with the rest of their own communities. All I say is just take a trip to the east side of Bakersfield and you'll see that it's a completely different world than the one that you believe in. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Any other public speakers?
Try this, even though I'm getting over laryngitis. Paul Infesti, District 3. Sometimes when I come here, I hear these coded terms by some of these speakers, like, "It's going to bring open borders and they're not going to assimilate." Sometimes I'm, feel really ashamed that I happen to be a white male in this community and I just, I don't know, we're going into the, we're already into the 21st century. Sometimes this county acts like it's barely climbing out of the 20th century, I mean, in the, no, the 19th century, the, back when the Chinese population was only brought into a builder railroad and then they were like trash special things. And I do find it a travesty in this county that we have one Latina on the board and the rest are white males. I don't see myself reflected in that attitude, however, I guess I'm just strange here. But even when I hear the whispers in this crowd after someone gets up and says, you know, such and such, we already, maldeaf, in my opinion, was only bad in the fact it took like eight years to correct something that happened in 2010. Are we going to be facing another situation where borders are going to be ordered by the court change in another eight years from this year after these borders are placed? I don't know if we want to wait and go through that type of headache again. We need to do the, we need to do the equity because we need to do what's right, not what we think we can sneak through a court decision, something. That's all I have to say.
Okay, next speaker, please. Any other public speakers? Okay, seeing none, we'll now bring it back to the board for comment. Supervisor Perez. Oh, I'm sorry, Jason.
Sorry, Chairman, members of the board. Jason, we be the county administrative office. I just want to briefly summarize some of the public comment we've received since the maps were published a week ago, I think during my last summary on the 8th, that during that evening hearing, I said there had been a fair and equal amount of support for both maps. And summarize some of those comments and communities of interest and some of those sentiments, which are really redundant to what the testimony received from people in attendance had done. But since those seven days, we have received probably 50% of our total public comment, either online, through the web form, or through telephone messages, so probably 150, growing as as I stand here, over the last seven days. Well over 100 were in support of A3, close to 40 in support of D, then some that were just kind of off topic, that didn't really fit in any category. I do, I did ask our IT to upload the most recent comments right before this meeting. I don't know if it's uploaded yet, but I do encourage people to read the comments. These are their neighbors, these are their community members that are providing these comments. "I support A3," or "I urge this board to support the Equity Coalition Map." But some, you know, did kind of go into communities of interest, and I did want to read a couple from either side that I thought would be good testimony for this board to hear that were a little more in detail rather than "I support this" or "I support that." So first from Ridgecrest, Renee Westalusk, pronounced your name wrong, I'm sorry. "Please keep the community of interest of the current first supervisory district together, which includes Highway 178 tourism corridor going west to east, where tourists can view historic sites, nature tours, and outdoor recreation, et cetera. Starting in Bakersfield to Buck Owens, Crystal Palace, Highway 178 takes you through Greenhorn Ranger Station, Kernville Gateways, to Sequoia National Forest, Lake Isabella Dam, and water recreational areas, Kennedy Meadows, Golden Trout Wilderness, Walker Pass, Pacific Crest Trail, Jawbone Open Off-Road Vehicle Area, and finally to Madurango and China Lake Museums and Ridgecrest. Please keep the first district that is. Thank you for listening. I support A3." And then in support of Equity Coalition Map, Olivia Seidman wrote, "My name is Olivia Seidman, civic engagement coordinator with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. A community-based organization that works with the community leaders in Fuller Acres. After discussion with Fuller Acres community leaders, Leadership Council supports the Equitable Map Coalition's map because it represents the community of interest that is Fuller Acres and Lamont. Both communities are low-income agriculture communities and burdened by oil and refineries and water contaminants, lack transportation infrastructure, and are under the same park and recreation district, Bear Mountain Recreation District. The Equitable Map Coalition map, by including Fuller Acres and Lamont in the same district, respects this community of interest. As such, we urge the board to adopt the Equitable Map Coalition's map today." So again, just to recap, one other thing, I know some individuals have mentioned petitions. I believe Ms. Lundquist is here. She submitted a petition of 209 signatures in support of A3 in addition to the others that have been mentioned. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions related to the process or anything else you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any questions for Mr. Weeby? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I'd like to share a story with you that I think is important and interesting, especially for some of the folks here that really feel a little pushed around by this process. I certainly relate to you. I do. When I was in Santa Barbara, my last year in Santa Barbara, my last couple of years in Santa Barbara, this is a long time ago, two decades ago, I had the privilege of working in the Ventura and Oxnard area for the United Farm Workers. And I was organizing faith leaders in that area to help a group of activists and other folks try to convince some growers there that shade and water was pretty basic in the workday. And I didn't know a lot about it, truthfully. I was fresh out of college. I was on my way to law school, which was a stint right before law school. And I went out and started meeting with faith leaders and other people in the community and just trying to get a feel for the subject. And on one particular day, we decided, or the organizers that were working with the workforce, decided to go and sort of have a political action, if you will. And I went along with them. And lo and behold, we had brought with us Supervisor John Flynn in Ventura. I don't know if you know him or know of him. And John Flynn was old-school Irish Catholic, and, you know, he told it like it was, and he didn't mince words with anybody. And John was on the Board of Supervisors. He went out there with us. I'll never forget it. I'll never forget it. We were in a van together with clergy and ministers, and we stopped at an area, and John, of course, being the very assertive, incredible leader that he was, got out first. He said, "Let me do the work." And he got out and he began to talk to folks very respectfully and with incredible grace and love. And I'd never seen anything like it, in particular from a white man, frankly. He was so passionate and so full of love, but smart and shrewd and, you know, credible with this crowd. And I was just totally floored by him, his example of leadership, the way he talked to people, and the fact that he really cared about the people in his district. It was clear. And I don't even know that he saw race very much. I didn't hear him talk about that much. But he was out there, and I remember we got back in the van, and he called his secretary, and he said, "Clear my day. We need to spend the day out here." And we went around to different places, and he had heartfelt conversations that were respectful, that were honest, hard-hitting, but boy, did he make an impact by his presence there. So a few months later, when he was ready to announce his reelection to the Board of Supervisors in Ventura, and the person challenging him was a very, very, very popular Latino doctor that was mayor. And there I was, right in the middle of that messy situation. Folks that were my mentors in that world advised me to just stay out of it. This is messy, messy, messy. Don't get involved. But, you know, John Flynn called me, and he asked me, not only would I support him, but would I introduce him at his first fundraiser? And I was just floored and honored beyond even words that he would even consider it. And I'm sure that there were political considerations in that, and that's just the nature of the business that we're in. And I struggled with it and talked to my mentors and even my bosses, who were very eager to stay out of a race that pitted two people that they really loved against each other, seemingly on race. And, you know, I can't speak to their motivations because I don't know them that well. But I was so proud to stand with John Flynn at the announcement of his reelection and not only support him, but announce him at his first fundraiser and tell the community why I supported him over this other Latino candidate. And I remember it was at a beautiful restaurant in Ventura. I remember looking out at the ocean and thinking, "God, what a beautiful moment." You can imagine that I got into some trouble for that. I did. And I can tell you 20 years later that I don't have any regrets about it, not one bit, because I know John's heart. I saw him in action, and I didn't see him out there pushing a political agenda for one special interest over another. He did not do that. He was out to have a conversation, and it was very clear to me that the people in his district mattered to him. And he was reelected over and over and over by all Latino district. I was always so amused by that because it was such a perfect demonstration of great leadership and how people will elect a great leader. These issues were difficult then, they're difficult now, and they will continue to be difficult. And if I could say to my colleagues how grateful I am to have a process that while heated at moments was extremely civil. We look at these issues, how they're dealt with around the world. They aren't even close to doing what is represented in this place and by our flag. So I want to say thank you to everybody involved in the civil discourse on what I think are the hardest issues: power, race, you know, it's tied to money. It's just the way it is. But I want you to know that if I had that choice again today, I would stand with John Flynn again, because I believe in his leadership and the man that he was and how he loved his district and how he fought like hell for his people. What I hear from the public in this process is much less about the color of somebody's skin and much more about the quality of the leadership. And we get, you know, I think there's political agendas, and these conversations are usually managed in the public by people who do not have an interest in making sure that we get the outcome right, but rather, you know, pitting us against each other. By that, I mean big headlines that profess that we haven't gotten as far as I believe we actually have. And so I am so grateful for this process because I have seen from the community that I come from and I represent and I love so dearly, a kind of collaboration and a sophistication that I have not seen before. I think that is remarkable progress, and I am so grateful for it. Really, I am. And while we had real disagreements through that process about the details, facts, which is natural, we did not have a difference of principle. We simply have a difference of opinion. And I am, and that's not original. That's from Jefferson to John Adams in their long struggle to understand their ideological differences. He says, "We do not have a difference of opinion. We have a, excuse me, we only have a difference of opinion, not of principle." So I want to say that the process, as it has been presented here, is supposed to be messy. Democracy is always messy. If it's not, it means that people don't think that they can come down and petition their government and tell the truth about how they feel. And what I have heard beyond the race talk is a quality of leadership conversation, that some people do not feel really that their heart and soul is represented. And that's not for me to say. That's an individual choice by individual voters, and we all have to determine who our leaders are going to be. But I want to say that I think this process has been relatively pain-free. While we almost have come to blows up here, myself included, we still have remained civil. And I think that that is such a precious, precious part of the American experiment, and I stay committed to it, as hard as it is, as it is for you, I'm sure. So I want to tell my community that has spoken loud and clear that I support you, I support your Equity Map, I support your heart and soul in trying to improve the condition and quality of your leadership. I want to caution you that simply the hue of somebody's skin certainly does not guarantee you good leadership. There are Latino leaders in this community I wouldn't support for dog catcher, frankly. So I think we need to, you know, have an honest discussion with ourselves and within the public, and we've got to really work through these things. Because as I told the New York Times over the weekend, in Kern County, you know, our Okies and Mexicans fall in love, right? Because we are a changing community, we are a changing society, as we have always been, as it is all over the world, and it is okay. It is really okay. I support the Equity Map. I support it with all of my heart, even though we had some differences of opinion. I support it wholeheartedly. I also support the position and the opinions of my colleagues and all of you that have come here in frustration and in deep love and concern for this community. I believe that is what drives you here. There are some political agendas, and that will always be, but I see a community really trying to do better, and I believe that we're there. So I want to express my passionate love and support to the community that has come together and have organized all kinds of folks to come down here and say, you know, "We would like a different quality of leadership." That's what I'm hearing. And there are reasonable minds will differ on that, and whether that's true or not really is up to the individual. And we get to, in a great privilege, work that out in the secret ballot process, which is absolutely, absolutely American and beautiful. So I want to put forth my support for the Equity Map, not because I think Latinos make better leaders. I stand by John Flynn and my decision to support him over an incredible Latino man who would have done a great job, I'm sure, because the quality of leadership is really what we should be consumed with, raising up leaders that recognize that this is not a pathway to wealth, this is not a pathway to help your friends become wealthy, this is the people's government funded by the taxpayer, and it belongs to the people. I believe that wholeheartedly. And in that spirit, I support the Equity Map because I love all of the folks that have come forward to express their desire to, for all of us to do better. And that is progress at the end of the day. That really is. So I want to say thank you for all of your positions and opinions. These are hard issues. They are hard for me, even as I sit here and try to share my heart with you. It's hard. So thank you. And to my colleagues, I submit those thoughts.
Thank you. Supervisor Perez. Supervisor Scrivener?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank all the members of the public for your input, both the folks that have attended this hearing, in addition to the others that we've had, and everyone who submitted comments on our county website or via email and letters. It's greatly appreciated regardless of the position you're taking. Your input is valued. I want to ask a question in regard to one of the speakers that gave us input today. I'm going to ask this of our legal staff. Ms. Pesante, I believe, and it was, she had translation, and so I am hopeful that I got this right, but I believe one of the statements she made is that the only map that complies with the law is the Equity Map. Did I, Ms. Raison, did I hear that right? I don't know if you heard that. I think it, can you, could you respond, please?
Supervisor Scrivener through the chair. I don't want to speak for her, but I believe what she said was that it's the map that complies now and in the future.
Okay, now and in the future. Okay. So I'd like to get an opinion on, because today we're considering two maps, A3 and D. And so do we have any opinion from our legal counsel as far as whether or not both of these two maps or one complies with the law?
Chair Peters, with your permission and greetings to the board, I believe the A3 map better complies with the law in all respects. It complies on the equal population basis, although there is leeway there, and I'm not recommending that you make your decision on that basis. But when it comes to the Federal Voting Rights Act, it provides real opportunity to elect. You have two districts, one of which was blessed by a federal court, with percentages of eligible voters, registration, and turnout that represents real opportunity, not opportunity 10 years from now. That will be taken care of 10 years from now and in that census. You're required to redistrict in the here and now. You are providing an opportunity in District 5, which has regularly performed for years electing Latino candidates. Not only that, we have opportunity in District 4 following the lead of Latino advocates to create a district that represented the historical farmworker community in this county, and that is our current District 4. It has percentages, no matter how you calculate it, that provides opportunity to elect. The concern with the Equity Coalition Map is that it spreads that strength, that voting strength, in a manner that renders it less effective and perhaps not effective at all. So yes, we have a growing Latino population, 50% or more. What we want to provide is opportunity, and the A3 map does that. We also have to look to the federal, to the state criteria, and on all bases, the A3 map unifies communities, communities of interest, census-designated places in cities, except of course for Bakersfield. So in my view, the Equity Map splits more of those entities, which are topping the list of state criteria. As your special counsel, we are prepared to give the opinion that the A3 map passes legal muster and does it better than the Equity Coalition Map.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from our staff before I continue in regard to anything that was said by any of the speakers that you'd like to address or any other items that you think at this time we ought to have as part of the record? Yeah, okay. Margot, did you have comments? Thank you.
I just wanted to...
Is your mic on, Margot?
It is now. Sorry about that. I just wanted to clarify the statement that was made about various translations, and under the election code, it specifies that with 72 hours' request or notice that various translations are to be provided, and we have not received such requests. We have provided Spanish translation at all workshops and public hearings. We also had Punjabi translation at some of the workshops that we had. Those were virtual, and I understand from, because it was an in-out, we could see how many calls were listening or had dialed into the Punjabi line, and we had no participants that were listening to the Punjabi line, although we did have the workshops translated. Also, somebody made a statement that the maps, the reference maps were not attached to the agenda material, and it is, in fact, attached. You can go to... did have the workshops translated. Also, somebody made a statement that the maps, the reference maps were not attached to the agenda material, and it is, in fact, attached. You can go to where the agenda is on the county website, and there's how you click to see the supporting documents, and the maps are included with that. Those are just the two clarifications I want to make.
Thank you very much. As far as what counsel was saying about A3, I very much agree, and I appreciate those comments. I had in my notes to mention the fact that it maintains the two voting rights districts at a higher percentage than what the Map D, the Equity Coalition map, would produce, and which is consistent with our settlement a few years ago in the Mall Def case. Also, the census-designated places, keeping those together, and our communities of interest, and the balancing of the population, obviously, that's an important criteria. And Map A3 does so with limited disruption to the current boundaries. And speaking of communities of interest, Map A3 also maintains the two East Kern districts, which I have expressed up here several times as being important, in my view, because putting all the mountain and desert areas into one district does not account for the diversity of the communities that are the Eastern Kern and all of our mountain areas down at the southern part of the county, whether you're looking at Fraser Park, Pine Mountain Club, Kern River Valley, or the deserts, Ridgecrest area versus Mojave, Rosamont, et cetera. And having those two Eastern Kern districts with one supervisor representing each of our two military installations, China Lake in the Ridgecrest area and Edwards Air Force Base in Southeastern Kern, I believe are critical components to a map that we approve. And so saying that, I would like to make a motion that we approve Map A3. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Governor. Supervisor Couch?
Thank you. I want to reiterate that, and I think this might possibly be what happened, on the website, when you go to the agenda, on the left-hand side, there's a little box where you see the item. When you click on the item, you have to scroll up a bit to see the maps. I didn't see them at first either, but they're on there. So I'm just, I'm reiterating what you said, is that they are on there. I heard some commentary about growth rates, and I want to know if there needs to be any comments put on the record by us with regard to growth rates. For example, I know that Kern Cog is a depository of all kinds of information. I know that they adopt a growth, they look at that, they know what the growth rates have been, they have a projection of what growth rates are going to do. Does that need to be part of our record?
Supervisor Couch, through the chair. If I could ask Ms. Leonie to weigh in on that.
I appreciate the comment. The law requires you to use a census, and it's a static moment in time. And you're required to use that as the basis for your redistricting. You have the ability, within the 10% deviation, to perhaps account for a population that you know is going to be in one district or another. But that's within your 10% deviation. However, you are not required to redistrict as to what you think is going to happen eight years from now.
And I didn't, I don't believe I saw or heard any evidence of an anticipated growth rate in a specific district or area. It was more of a general comment about growth rates.
Yeah. And Supervisor Couch, the census is as fresh as it's ever going to be. You know, it's not like we're six or eight years from the census. This is as fresh as it's ever going to be.
Thank you. I will, I'll second your motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Couch. Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to belabor and repeat things I've said in previous hearings, but I'd like to just confirm another thing with Ms. Leonie. Thank you for joining us today. It's nice to have you with us again. One claim was made by a gentleman that we are not paying attention to the census data. Can you address that issue and just make it clear for the record what your opinion is about whether or not we are?
Yes, I think that this takes into full consideration, the census data. I am going to turn to our demographer and ask him for the deviation in this plan.
Sure. Thank you, and thank you very much for having us here again today. So...
Good afternoon, Mr. Mitchell.
In the Plan A3, we have deviations for each of the districts that have been provided every time we've gone through different iterations. There's deviations assigned to each district, so it'll say district is 1% or 2% off from the ideal population size. And then the deviation of the plan is the difference between the greatest and the lowest deviation. So your highest deviation is 1.8%, and your lowest deviation is 1.7%. So that accumulates to 2.5% or 3.5% total plan deviation for the entire plan, which is well within that 10% deviation.
Now, let me mention that there's no inherent value of being at zero. If that requires communities to be broken, odd boundaries, misshapen boundaries. So you are well within legal, and you are paying attention to the census. In addition, these districts have been drawn and evaluated based on the most recent data we have about the strength of Latino vote. There's nothing fresher. And it has been on every single chart published and presented to the public in this process. The source of that data is the federal census, and it has been used throughout. Supervisor Maggard, I hope that answers your question.
It does. I just want to make sure that we make this vote with a clear understanding of our professionals' opinions as to whether or not we meet our legal burden and are, you know, robustly trying to comply with the law. Thank you. Ms. Raison, do you concur?
Supervisor Maggard, through the chair. I do.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. I just wanted to say that we've heard a great deal of public comment on this process. I believe we've got a really good idea of what the public would like to see out of this. Just sitting up here, I've heard a lot of things that, you know, I personally agree with or I personally disagree with, but that's neither here nor there. I appreciate Supervisor Perez's comments about differences of opinion, not principles. And...
Ms. Thomas Jefferson.
There you go. Well, I understand there's a lot of passions, a lot of opinions on both sides of the issue, but in my opinion and the opinion of the majority of constituents I've talked to, uniting East Kern into one district would not be beneficial for their representation on the board. And I believe that Map A3 is the best option we have to move forward in this redistricting process. So I would just like to go ahead and voice my support for that as well. That being said, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments from the board before we take a vote?
Seeing none, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one opposed. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. Having no additional items to consider, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to Monday, December 7th at 9:00 a.m. So moved. Thank you. Without objection, we are adjourned.